We will now call to order the special meeting for Long Pooh City Council for March 17th, 2021. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Vega? Councilmember Vega?
Here.
I did say here.
Oh, we didn't hear you.
I said it three times, here, here, here. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Cordova?
Present.
Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborn?
Here. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the public, you may watch the meeting live on Channel 23, Comcast Channel 23. You may listen on KPEG Radio Station 100.9 FM or livestream from www.cityoflongpook.com. Click the City Council button and then view City Council meeting videos. If you're unable to watch tonight, the recording will be available within 24 to 48 hours for you to watch. If you wish to make a comment during oral communications or the agenda item, you may call 805-875-8201 before the close of public comment on the agenda item, at which time you will have three minutes to contribute. The item for tonight's agenda is presentation on pension obligation bonds. And the council will receive the presentation and then direct staff on further analysis. We'll hand it over to you, Mr. Trup.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, tonight's meeting is actually from a council request on pension obligation bonds, or POBs, just because it's easier to say. The request was to bring back more information on what the POBs are, how they work, pros and cons, what they can do to help the city, and much more information. So we did ask for a special meeting, which is tonight, as there is quite a bit of information to present, and we thought it best to just keep it simple without having all the other agenda items that we usually talk about. So we have asked NHA Advisors to come back in and give the council a presentation on the POBs and all that I just mentioned above about what they're, what we can do with them. If you do recall, NHA Advisors, they've been here before a couple of times now, and council has made multiple comments about their professional skill set, that they like them. So I did ask them to come back and do a discussion on the POBs. Tonight's presentation, I just want to remember, remind everybody, this doesn't lock the council into doing anything. It's just strictly educational, informational, so then we can move on to the next step if council so chooses. What we're hoping to do, because of the setup with Zoom and everything else, if we can hold the questions to the end, because if you remember the last time, we had to get up and walk over to the podium, it was not the best, but we're a little better than we were the last time. So the end result, as I said, of the meeting is to then ask council on whether staff should continue forward with the next steps of the analysis, which would include what we're calling the validation process. NHA will go through all of these, or the council can say, no, that's enough. We've, we've heard enough on pension bonds and we're good. If the decision is to go forward, then again, NHA would go into the detail. But staff, we will work with the actuaries and the other consultants that would be necessary to do the studies and things such as stress testing of all the different scenarios that could come about. After this is completed, which could be about four to six months, we'd return again with all the analysis and results, report this out to the council. At that time, the council would then decide whether to move forward with any issuing of the POBs or not to go forward with any, any of the POBs. So again, tonight, there's nothing other than just educational outreach. We do have Craig Hill, Mike Myers, they were both here the last two times from NHA. They're on Zoom, and I'm going to turn it over, and I think Craig's the one who's going to start the presentation.
Good evening. This is Craig Hill, Managing Principal of NHA Advisors. I will start it out and then turn it over to our head of our Pension Practice Group, Mike Meyer.
Go ahead and change slide. So we are, we've broken this, this conversation or this educational presentation up into four pieces. We'll talk a little bit about kind of what are your objectives, what are you trying to accomplish or understand? Then we'll get into the background and really what your pension program looks like. We'll talk about some concepts that a lot of your peers are doing around the state, and then we can get into some next steps, as well as answer any questions that you may have once we're done. So we have been, before the council, a couple of times, providing information on what your UAL or your unfunded actuarial liability for your CalPERS pension program looks like. All of this has been intended to help address the significant changes that have come across and the liabilities that have grown over the last few years. As you can see, your, your current unfunded liability is just inside of $97 million, which has been a significant increase from $58 million only seven years ago. You are not unique. This is something that most cities and public agencies that are CalPERS members are seeing across the state. You were also approved and went forward last year with a Fresh Start amortization program, and we'll get into a little bit about what that looks like. The intent there was obviously, I think the primary objective of City Council was to save interest that otherwise would have been due to CalPERS over time. Next slide. As a quick recap of what you did and how it's impacting your, your payments to CalPERS, you can see that prior to doing the Fresh Start, the orange line represented what our projected payments were going to be over time. And you can see that on the back end, because you did the Fresh Start, you will not have any payments. Excuse me. The, the blue payments, the light blue payments, represent what you are now committed to paying. As you can see, they're higher than they otherwise would have been in these first few years, peaking out in, you know, 15 years from now. It's going to end up costing, or you're going to end up spending approximately $21 million more between now and 2035. You'll make about $42 million back, so you'll effectively save $21 million over the term of what otherwise would have been your payment structure. So the idea that we're really going to try to walk through tonight from an educational perspective is, you know, what tools or what options do you have when trying to address this increasing payment? Unlike your services, your capital needs, some of your other organizational demands on your revenues and your resources, CalPERS really puts them, themselves at the front of the line, and it's a committed payment that really crowds out a lot of your other, what I'll call either discretionary or non-discretionary expenses. So what we're going to walk through are really some of the concepts that you may want to entertain as part of addressing kind of a larger financial plan that is intended not just to look at next year or the second year, but really look at the overall financial health of the city for the next 10 to 20 years. I will turn it over now to Mike Meyer to kind of get more into the details of the program.
Thanks, Craig, and good evening, everybody. Mike Meyer, Vice President with NHA Advisors. As Craig noted, I'm going to talk a little bit about some background figures, talk about the UAL restructuring concept in general, and then really focus in on the risks, because there are risks associated with a, any type of UAL restructuring. So just as a quick recap, the first few slides in this section are very similar to what we presented a couple of years ago, but we did want to just refresh everyone's memory. The city does have two or three primary plans. There's the miscellaneous plan that does cover non-safety employees, about 265 active employees. With all the retired members, there's 882 that are covered. And then there's two safety plans for fire, as well as police, 262 covered members. 68 of those are active. And as you can see from the bottom table, what's starting to happen is that new employees are now coming in under the PEPRA plan, the lower cost, lower benefit plan. So about half of the employees are in a classic plan, and half are in a PEPRA plan. And as, as there's turnover, as the years go by, all employees will be part of these new PEPRA plans, which should help reduce any risk that agencies are facing this same challenge in the future. The current UAL, just to note, is, you know, over 99% of that is attributable to the classic plans and really what's happened over the last 20 years. So just to define a couple of key terms, the city does make two types of payments to CalPERS each year. The first is the normal cost, which is the cost for current employees. And then there is a payment to pay down or amortize the unfunded accrued liability, or the UAL. This UAL is really the shortfall between what you currently have in assets versus how much you will need in the future to fully pay out retiree benefits. And that's that $96.7 million number that Craig mentioned earlier. Again, this is amortized at a 7% interest rate with CalPERS, and a bulk of, the vast majority of that, that loan or that debt is being amortized over the next 14 or 15 years, based on the recent Fresh Starter implementation. In terms of why, you know, why agencies are in this situation, just to kind of go back, quick history. Back in the 90s, CalPERS plans were overfunded, so there was double-digit stock returns. There were no unfunded liabilities, and at that time, a lot of, there was widespread retirement benefit enhancements, which helped contribute, contribute to the problem that agencies face today. Fast forward, over the last 20 years, we've seen average growth of 5.5% on CalPERS earnings, which has been under their targets, so each time they underperform, that does increase the unfunded liability. The second part of this equation is that CalPERS has ratcheted down their assumptions several times, and their, their main assumption is what's called their discount rate, and this is their expected rate of return on investments. And that's been lowered several times since 2003, when it was eight and a quarter. It was reduced in 2013, down to 750, and then there was a phase down to 7% that ended last year. Other changes on the assumptions front are mortality rates, given that people are living longer, and they also switched to, from an actuarial valuation of assets to a market valuation. This took place after the Great Recession. They realized that their old method of calculating assets, which was a rolling average, was not accurate. And so after the Great Recession, they moved to a market valuation, which essentially looked at the actual value that year of assets. So that was another quick impact on the way they calculated UAL and forced agencies to pay on the UAL. The last part of, part of this challenge is also that new UAL that gets added each year when, when CalPERS underperforms is on a 20-year repayment schedule. So this is a little shorter than the, the old 30-year repayment schedules, which also adds to cash flow pressure, just because those are higher payments. So the current repayment schedule for the city's UAL is shown here on Slide 11. We did take it back to 2015, as you can see on the left side of the chart, where the city was paying about $2.7 million on the UAL. That number did rise to close to $5 million in fiscal year 19, close to $6 million in fiscal year 20. And then after the city implemented the Fresh Start program, those payments jumped up to about $8.6 million for this fiscal year and will continue to, to grow to about $11.6 million in 2031. I do want to note that this is a snapshot in time, so this, this does assume that there's no more UAL added in the future and that CalPERS earns 7% each year. What will happen is that any year CalPERS earns under 7%, they'll add a layer to these payments that's amortized over 20 years. And if they have a good year, like they're having this year, I believe they're at about 13% this year so far, there will be an offset to this shape. So it is, it is changing each year. The other, you know, as part of these discussions we're having with a lot of our clients, one of the components is talking a lot about the what-if scenario. So there have been discussions that CalPERS may ratchet down that discount rate again in the future. Whether that happens or not is an unknown, but it is something to take into account when, when planning long-term. We have a lot of, a lot of agencies out there do utilize a lower discount rate when doing their budget modeling and long-term projections. And so this slide really is just, we wanted to make the assumption that CalPERS does reduce the discount rate to 6%, just to give you an idea of what that could do to the UAL. It would increase the UAL by about $41 million, and, and annual payments by about $3.8 million, as you can see in those navy blue bars. So again, this has not happened, but something to take into consideration when, when doing long-term projections. The next section, starting here on 14, is focused on the UAL restructuring concept. And this concept really entails borrowing money by issuing a bond and taking those funds and paying off some or all of your UAL with CalPERS. And the typical structure that is used, I think about 80% of the cities who have recently executed this restructuring have used a POB structure. Some cities have used a lease revenue bond structure, which does require collateral to be pledged. But a POB is unsecured, there's no collateral required. But there is a court validation process that is required to essentially confirm that UAL is a true debt that can be refinanced with bonds. And that's typically a three-to-four-month process. We have seen some delays in some counties due to COVID, where that's stretched out to four or five or six months. I think it's important to note that the validation provides the foundation to issue POBs at any time in the future, but it does not lock a city into doing a transaction. There would be several approvals required down the road. There are fees required as part of a validation process for, for legal counsel. Typically, those fees are in the $20,000 range, depending on who your, your, your legal counsel is. We're going to get into, over the next several slides, some of the other cities who have executed these and kind of what the strategy was behind the restructuring for those cities, because there is no one-size-fits-all strategy. But one of the reasons that a lot of cities have been looking at this just in the 12, last 12 months, as this market has reemerged, is given where interest rates are. So there's been about 40 transactions over the last 12 months. Interest rates have ranged from about 2.54% up to about 4% on those transactions, which is quite a bit lower than the 7% that CalPERS is charging the city. The savings is not, between those two interest rates is not guaranteed, and we're going to focus on, on what that risk is and what that risk means in a few slides as well. I mentioned there's been about 40 agencies who have issued UAL restructuring debt. This slide on 15 lists some of them. Most, most of the ones in 2021 are shown on the top left. There was an issue that priced in the market today by the city of Huntington Beach, about $350 million, so that did not make it onto this slide. You know, the rates have been very, very volatile in this market as, as investors have really started to digest all these pension obligation bonds. So when, when a lot of these cities were coming to market in mid-2020, you know, the, the range was really between 350 and 4%. As we headed into early 2021, there was a lot of investor demand for these transactions. And so the rates that were obtained by the last six cities, Chula Vista, Orange, Huntington Beach, Downey, Monterey Park and El Cajon, were sub-3%. So they were in the 2.5 to 2 point, I, I believe Huntington Beach was a 2.95% today. So there's been quite a bit of fluctuation between the 2.5 to, to a little over 4% over the last year. A lot of that's due to just where general interest rates are. A lot of it's had to do with the pandemic, and a lot of it is just due to supply and demand factors and investor comfort level with, with pension bonds. So there hasn't been a one-size-fits-all strategy for these pension bonds. There's some agencies that we've worked with who have chosen to pay off a quarter of their UAL, so 25 to 30%. We've had some agencies pay off the full 100%. We've had, some agencies will, will do a short maturity of 15 years, and many will go out 30 years. So we wanted to just put here on Slide 16, just a snapshot of a handful of cities, just to show that there's really no one-size-fits-all to the repayment shape that you can do. You, you essentially have a clean slate to put into place a repayment shape that works for your individual situation. So you can see on the top left, Ukiah went with a, a, a 1% escalating payment, and then it kind of declined over the last 10 years. Riverside chose to level off that peak in payments and then had a pretty quickly declining payment shape, as you can see in that purple line. Hawthorne on the bottom left, they did a 30-year transaction with level payments, and then West Covina did a 25-year with 2% escalating. And again, if you look at any of the agencies on the previous page, you'll find different terms, different repayment shapes, different sizes. So again, no, no one-size-fits-all for these types of transactions. The Slide 17, the next two slides are just focused on the market. Slide 17 is a 30-year snapshot of treasury rates, 30-year treasury rates, which are taxable interest rates. That's the benchmark that other taxable bonds are essentially measured against. And then on the top right is just the last 12 months. And so you can see picture, we've been at historical lows. If you look at the royal blue line on the bottom right, although we have bounced up from those lows over the last 12 months. I think we hit the lowest treasury mark ever during the, the height of the pandemic. And then over the last several weeks, really, we've seen about a 40 to 50 basis point increase in treasury rates. The, the other component of where interest rates are for pension bonds is really where investors are willing to purchase those bonds and how much of a premium they want above treasury rates. And so what we've done here is charted from left to right some of the POBs from last spring, moving to some of the recent ones on the right. And in the blue columns, that represents the overall interest rate paid on the pension bond. And so you could see the trend has really been from about the 4% level down to close to 2.5. And then Orange, that just priced last week, was a little bit higher. And then, as I mentioned today, Huntington Beach was just a hair under 3%. So the trend is heading a little bit upward, but relative to where we were about 12 months ago, still quite a bit lower. So just to give the city an idea of potential magnitude, we, we wanted to keep it hopefully digestible in terms of the number of options. As we'll talk about, most of these, for, for many of our clients who do go deeper into an evaluation process, there's, there's dozens and dozens of, of options to evaluate. But just to, I think the purpose here is to give everyone an idea of the potential magnitude of benefit and just some different options to look at in terms of repayment shape. And so for simplicity, we, we did assume that the whole UAL is paid off. As I mentioned, you could do a small fraction of the UAL, all the way up to the full thing. We did build in some cushion in the interest rates, about 1.2% higher than where Chula Vista was in February. And we did three options. We wanted to keep the term, in the first option, we wanted to keep the term the exact same as the current Fresh Start payments, so the next 14 years. The, the middle option is a 20-year POB option, and then the option three is a 25-year option. And the options one and two are 1% escalating payments, whereas option three is a level payment stream. And so just to look at these options graphically, the, on Slide 20 here, we have a chart. Again, those blue bars are the same payments that we looked at earlier in the presentation. Those are representative of your current required payments to CalPERS. And then in the lines, those represent the potential new pension bond payments. And so you can see in Orange, that's the longer 25-year maturity level payments at around the $6 million level through 2046. On the shorter end of the spectrum is in navy blue, that's a 14-year restructuring, so it keeps the same term as the Fresh Start and escalates at 1% each year. So you can see that that payment starts at about $8 million, and then it grows to about $9 million in 2035. And then we have a middle option in green there, starts out at around the $6 million mark and then grows to about $7.75 million by 2041. So some of the metric behind those, in the chart here, we have in columns moving from left to right, 14-year option, the 20-year option, and then the 25-year option. And as you can, as you move from left to right, you can see that the, the interest rate of each option increases as you increase the term. So So for the fourteen-year option, right around three percent, uh estimated three points five-nine percent for the twenty-year, and then up to three point seven-nine for the twenty-five-year. On a uh present value basis, the savings are estimated anywhere between eighteen uh point four million, which is the twenty-five-year option on the way right, up to twenty-four point nine million uh in the first option on the left column, the fourteen-year. I think really the area to focus uh on the most and where you see the most contrast is at the bottom. Uh, the, the savings over the next fourteen years. Um, if the longer the maturity, you're able to bring down the annual payment level. So the, the, the savings that are in the first fourteen years are the greatest under the, the longer orange option, about sixty-seven million of savings uh versus the fourteen-year option, which is at about uh thirty-one million. Obviously, the longer maturity does add some payments on the back end. So when you look at everything on a cumulative basis, which you can see on the row third from the bottom, that number decreases as you go out longer in maturity because you have more added payments uh in the back end. On, on an annual basis, on average, for the next fourteen years, these options range from about two point two to to four point eight million uh depending on the option. Come on, slide twenty-two here, um we talked a bit about the, the estimated savings. I do wanna note, um and we had that in a footnote, that those savings do assume that CalPERS earns seven percent in the future. And as we're gonna get into, um, the savings will be different based on uh what CalPERS actually earns. And so we're gonna talk about what that risk is, uh some of the um process that we've seen in terms of stress testing, a lot of what-if scenarios uh to really uh understand what these risks are for, for a P O B. Um, I do wanna note, though, on the bottom of slide twenty-two, um, one thing to focus on uh as part of these projects, if you were to go deeper into this evaluation process, is not just the interest rate being paid, but really the resiliency to handle future shocks. So um, for example, the longer maturity option does have a slightly higher interest rate, but because it, it allows the city to bring down the annual payment level, there is more capacity to absorb future U A L that might get added on by CalPERS in the future if they do have down years. So um, again, there's no, there's no right answer as to um what the right term is. Uh, from our perspective, it's important to look at all the options, but also look at those options under more dire um assumptions. So as we'll get into as part of the stress testing, you know, looking at what if there is another oh-eight recession after the bond is issued? What if CalPERS only earns four percent for the next twenty-five years? Those are things that can get modeled out uh to really understand where the city would be better or worse off having done a P O B. So I, I think we, we, some of the benefits are, are probably pretty clear um on the, you know, from the metrics on the previous pages. Um, I think specifically over the next fourteen to fifteen years, anywhere between thirty and sixty million of savings that, you know, could be used to address other um city priorities. Obviously, the flexibility um to really put into place a, a, a term and a repayment shape that works for your objectives, uh financial constraints and, and, and risk-reward tolerances. Um, that flexibility is an added benefit as well. So now we come to the right side of, of slide twenty-three, which is really uh the core risk of any pension bond, and that's known as reinvestment uh in market timing risk. And the rule of thumb is uh savings is ultimately dependent on future CalPERS returns, which are, of course, unknown at the time of issuance. And this is a primary concern of the uh Government Finance Officers Association. Um, what it really means, um simply put, is that you are better off after having done a pension bond if CalPERS earns more in investment earnings than the bond rate that you pay. So um, that means that if you were to borrow at three and a half percent on a pension bond and CalPERS only earned three percent over the next twenty-five years, you would have been worse off having done the P O B. Um, if they earn five percent, uh the savings that was projected would be reduced, uh but there still would be savings because CalPERS did earn above uh the bond rate. And this really all comes down to the fact that you are giving CalPERS a lump sum of money at one point in time. So there's more assets that are exposed to the market, uh which really means that any near-term gains or losses get magnified. So um, there's a lot of agencies who issued pension bonds in the last year who, who may have timed it uh fairly well because CalPERS has had a good year of thirteen percent. So those gains are gonna get magnified. Uh, however, if there were big losses, uh those losses would also get magnified. And so that's really the core uh risk that we think uh is, needs to be, is very helpful to be quantified, but also to use that information to help determine whether this is a structure worth executing or even to help uh evaluate which option uh might be best to really stress test it and to figure out if the, the resiliency um is there to handle any potential future downturns. And so I mentioned stress testing, and, and this is a very, I, I, I understand it's probably a pretty complex subject. We wanted to throw in a few charts. Um, these were lifted from a recent webinar that we participated in, talking about the risks of pension bonds. Um, it's something that we've been working with. Um, you know, different actuaries and different agencies that focus on this, and uh we do a lot of the stress testing. But really what it comes down to is looking at, it's, it's very easy to look at the previous chart of savings um and say, hey, that's a lot of savings, we need to do that. But I think what's important is to make some assumptions as to what could happen with CalPERS returns in the future, and then look at what are the payments that the city would be paying with a P O B and without? Because um, you know, whether or not as you issue a P O B, you're gonna get hit with more U A L in the future. Um, it's, you know, the number could be different, though, whether you do a P O B or not do a P, P O B, and that's the analysis that we think is important. So as you can see from the bottom of twenty-four, just as a, a sample for presentation purposes, on the left, that's kind of a status quo. Um, you know, gray line is a P O B. Uh, the teal line was the previous payments with CalPERS. And then as you move to the right, there's a middle scenario where both of those lines lift up. Uh, if CalPERS only earns five point five percent, and you can see that the, the savings gets reduced there uh in this hypothetical scenario. And then even out to the right even more, you know, those lines get pushed up very high if there's another oh-eight recession. Uh, and of course, um, you know, whether or not an agency does a P O B or does not, um, those payments will increase whenever CalPERS does have underperformance. It just may be that the cost is higher uh if you had more assets with CalPERS having done the P O B. I mentioned that the G F O A uh came out in two thousand fifteen uh and recommended against um agencies doing pension bonds. And so we wanted to uh put that on a slide. Uh, we wanted to share the, the six key reasons why they uh do not recommend agencies do them. Um, the first one is the exact risk we just talked about, which is reinvestment risk. So uh on the left there, on the top, it says invested pension bond proceeds might earn less than the borrowing cost. And that is a uh correct statement, it's a real risk. Um, there is definitely a chance that long-term returns are below the bond rate, whether that's three percent or four percent. That is a uh, a risk that will always be there. And again, um, I can't harp on it enough that uh a stress testing process to really look at those risks uh would be recommended for anyone who, who gets into uh evaluating this further. The other, the other concerns are a bit dated. Um, they do relate to a lot of the P O Bs done in the two thousands, and I'll, and I'll just go through briefly why current pension bonds are, are a bit different. Uh, that second row there, uh that there are complex instruments that may include swaps or derivatives. That is not the case anymore. All the pension bonds being issued are traditional fixed-rate bonds. The third uh concern was that the uh, it does use up uh debt capacity. Um, a validation process actually um does not, that this debt is not counted um for uh the city's debt burden. Um, obviously lowering the payments actually, one could argue, frees up uh debt capacity. So that one, uh, I think may be more applicable to some out-of-state agencies who have done uh P O Bs with different uh legal framework. The fourth one down is that pension bonds are typically issued without call provisions. Uh, this is true uh for the, the P O Bs that were issued prior to two thousand ten. I would say uh ninety, ninety-five percent of those uh P O Bs were uh issued without a call option. And a call option really means the ability to prepay those bonds or restructure them uh at no penalty. And so all, I think, except two of the recent pension bonds that have been issued are, have been issued with a, a standard ten-year call feature, meaning that uh you could pay those off after ten years with no penalty or, or refinance them. Um, the fifth one, um, you know, pension bonds are frequently structured in a manner that defers the principal payments. Uh, that's typically not the case for most, almost all the pension bonds we've seen recently. Uh, principal uh begins immediately on those transactions. And I think we've been through about nine or ten credit, credit rating um processes over the last twelve months. And I'd say that rating agencies are fairly neutral um on these transactions if they are part of a um, a plan, a long-term plan. And so what we'll get to in a second is, is also the importance of a pension funding policy, uh which we have seen uh is extremely helpful uh for both the credit rating, but also to put uh some framework and a roadmap really around how a city will use those savings. And um, I wanna flip, actually skip maybe a, a, a slide, I'll come back to twenty-six. Um, we pulled a recent uh issuers uh pension funding policy. This is something they put into place that they really tied to their reserve policy to uh put some framework around how future savings would be used. And so they had um four or five different reserve buckets from their basic operating reserve to uh contingency reserves that uh would get filled up through the P O B savings. And then there would be kind of a trickle-down where uh remaining surplus uh would fund C I P, would fund a section one fifteen trust, which could go towards O P E V and pension expenses in the future. Uh, and then lastly, another reserve that could be used to actually pay down the, the P O Bs early. So um, you know, this is an example of one city's pension funding policy. Um, there's lots of others. Um, I would, I would say that whether the city uh looks at a P O B in the future or not, a pension funding policy is um, i- is a prudent uh policy to consider adopting. So flipping back to twenty-six, um, you know, as I mentioned, uh Craig and I and, and our firm have been through um a lot of evaluation uh projects for this type of transaction. Some have moved forward, some have not. Um, it is complex, as you've probably seen from just some of the introductory slides tonight. And so um up top there in the bullet, you know, education is, 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 is very important, I think. Um, you know, this is a, this, like I said, it's a complex subject. So making sure that um all stakeholders are involved and all questions get, get answered, I think, is very important. This is not a traditional uh bond financing. It's probably actually one of the, the most complex bond financings you can undertake with um, just with all the different variables, the um, the, the complexity, the risks associated with it, and then even, you know, uh the, 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 the legal process, uh as well as just on the quant side, there's, there's literally an infinite amount of options. Um, I would say that minimum, with a lot of our projects, we're looking at dozens of, and dozens of options to really, to, to, to figure out what is the right um size, uh shape, term, based on an individual's various constraints and risk tolerance. So the one item I mentioned was a validation process. And so um slide twenty-eight here is really a hypothetical timetable. Obviously, the city, um, you know, this may not be a concept that uh the city wants to look at further. It may be something you look at a year or two down the road. But generally speaking, uh this is a, a four-to-five-month process at a minimum, and that's because the validation process takes about four months. Um, even prior to the validation, there's obviously typically a good amount of education. There's basic legal documents that need to get drafted. And so this is really a hypothetical timetable that would put the city uh uh into the fall of two thousand twenty-one, uh when perhaps that validation could be completed and you can reassess the market at that time. Uh, a lot of the, the educational work, stress testing, options, evaluation uh for several, uh, a lot of cities will do that at the same time as the validation. Um, others will go through with um that education, stress testing, options, analysis before starting a validation. So really, it's, there's no one way to do it. Just wanted to make clear that there is really a four-to-five-month uh period there before you could even uh decide to try and execute a pension bond, if that's the way that uh the city wanted to move forward. Whoops. Okay, so last uh, last page here, um and Craig, feel free to cut me off. I know I've been talking a lot, but I think it's uh clear that, you know, the city has done um, you know, ha- has definitely been prudent in putting into uh action a, a plan to pay off the U A L early um with the fresh start. Um, so that will bring savings uh starting uh out in two thousand thirty-five. Um, although I do think it is, um, the charts are probably fairly uh clear that it does uh possibly make it tough to, to focus on other priorities of the city, whether that be capital or whether that's rebuilding reserve levels um to some of the minimum uh requirements or the targets that the ci- that the city has. And then I think lastly, you know, looking at a lot of the what-if scenarios, whether a bond is done or not, um, you know, there will be new U A L added in the future. I think a lot of uh, the majority of folks feel that seven percent might be hard to meet for CalPERS. And so really, um, you know, making sure that the city does have the resiliency and ability to absorb those, those future shocks is important, whether a pension bond is, is, uh a restructuring is executed or not. Um, and I think we put, you know, a slide earlier on kind of the what-if, if there's a discount rate reduction, but there's a lot of other types of scenarios that you can look at. Um, pension funding policy, again, I think this could be something the city may wanna consider, uh whether or not it looks at a U A L restructuring uh just to continue to put a plan in place to um continue addressing uh this, this challenge. I think lastly, and maybe, you know, maybe this is uh uh Jim, uh better handled by Jim, but I think perhaps the goal of this educational workshop is to see, you know, answer any questions, see if this is a topic worth discussing in the future. So I'll, I'm gonna stop talking there, and Craig, if I missed anything, feel free to chime in.
Yeah, no, thanks, Mike. I think uh, you know, to turn it back for council's questions, uh this is certainly a tool that you should be thinking about with regards to your overall organizational financial objectives, right? The, your pension liability, your pension payments are just one piece of your budget. And there, as Mike mentioned, um, with the fifty or sixty public agencies that we're working with that are talking about this, um, no two are alike. So the, the only similarity is that everybody's talking about this. And so it is important, and, and we wanna make sure that- And so it is important and, and we want to make sure that you all have the information, have the knowledge and have the tools necessary to make the right decisions as you go forward with your budget process for 21, 22. And/or, as Mike mentioned, trying to take an opportunity to replenish reserves and build up the financial strength of the city. So with that, Jim, we'll turn it back over to you and to council, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Stacy. Oh, they can hear us, okay. So I'll turn this over back to council for any, any discussion you have. Again, oh, yeah, yeah. What I wanted to take an opportunity to, since we're kicking off the budget cycle, to talk a little bit about what, what's in our budget and pitfalls I see and, and my takeaway from a pension obligation bond. I think they did a great job of explaining a lot of things. I know I have a different takeaway on pension obligation bonds and the potential and also the flexibility, but I wanted to touch on a few things that I'm going to talk about. The animation.
Would you like us to stop the screen share?
Yeah, I don't know who I am. Now, anyway, so this is what I brought to you guys, June 2nd. I wanted to recap on where we are with our budget. My projection for year one was that we were going to see a 1.8 million deficit. It came in pretty line with a 1.7 deficit. There you go. And this is what I brought, June 2nd, where we added appropriations. We added appropriations for the I-2020 ballot measure with 4.9 million. I wanted to also talk about some of the things that the I-2020 funded. One was we got to get rid of the 1.3 million we had in held positions. You can see the 400,000 was at-large positions. We had, we were able to fill, or we haven't filled it, but we are able to take the frozen positions for the police officers off. Were able to fund 1.75 in park positions. And overall, we had about 26 vacant positions in the budget that I-2020 helped us fund. My estimate now is a little bit higher. TOT is coming in a little bit lower. Cannabis is coming in a little bit higher. So we're probably going to see a surplus this year of about 2.5 million. Put that in perspective of what the UAL reset was, that was about 20% of the I-2020. In 2021, 22 budget, that's around 18%. And if you add the cannabis, it's somewhere closer to 12% of the new taxes was going to be used for this reset. So I wanted to let everybody know that. One of the things I want to touch on is, is the general fund. Now, when you look at the general fund, it's one of the only funds where you report your current revenues against your current expenditures. And there's a reason why they do that with the general fund. The reason is, is long-term debt's not supposed to be there. You know, you're supposed to make up your unfundedness, if you will, that the next year or the next few years have a plan to refund it. We have these, these debts right here. You can see how much debt we have. We have a pool demo out there. We, we still have about 100,000 to pay on that. Over half a million for our Chevron energy projects. We got a couple hundred thousand in fire truck and they're, they're falling apart. We also have about 300,000 in the, in the loans to, an internal loan for the money we, I mean, land we bought at the River Park. That leaves us about 1.1 million in debt for the general fund, about a 300-year payment stream to pay those debts. And of course, not to mention, I know Mike talked about the citywide. My estimate is that with the rate of returns right now, first, the general fund's probably on the hook for about 43 million. You can see it's 4.1 million annual payment. That puts our overall annual payment at $4.5 million. Those all should be paid off. I mean, we, we got to come up with a strategy to pay these off. And that's one of the things I'd like to key in on when we do the next budget, is to try and get at least the top lease payments off the books, so we can have 300,000 in sustainable revenues that we can use for police officers or fire or equipment. So to me, it's important to get this, this debt off the books. Like I said, the general fund is one of the only funds that's reported current. You know, you get in the enterprise funds, they have long-term debt. They, they, they show it on the financials. This is reported different because it's not supposed to have long-term debt in it. I think the one thing about pension obligation bonds that makes me very nervous is how much the market has rallied. And the reason why the market has really rallied is because of the stimulus money. The market has rallied 33% over a year ago. This year, it's sitting around 15% based upon what it was yesterday, or the 15th. It's not May 15th, that March? That's March, okay. Looks like May from here. I'm sorry. Anyways, that makes me very nervous. We're buying a lot of stock in, in CalPERS on margin. You're taking a big loan out basically doing a pension obligation bond. You're buying on the market. To me right now, I'm just a little too nervous of where the market is. I, I think that a pension obligation bond is a good thing, good tool. I just think right now it might not be a very good time to do it. I think another concern I have is we did this ballot measure. We said we're going to pay it off in 15 years. And I know Mike talked a lot about that and he did a really great job of how much we're going to save doing the refresh. I would say I'd, I'd like to see that whatever pension obligation bond and the flexibility for us, I like that he talked about that. It is, is to make sure that we're going to be within that, that I-2020 revenue stream. Because if that revenue stream runs out and the voters have a different feeling, I put 55 million would be the debt if we did a 30-year amortization. That's the magnitude that, that would be scary for me if the voter said, no, we had that big debt on the books. Anyways, I know Mike also talked about GFOA, the Government Financial Officers Association, and their opinion. Their opinion is state and locals shouldn't do a pension obligation bond. And I think I put in all your boxes, a article from the president of GFOA, and she talks about the pitfalls, and I thought it was a good article. And she hits on the same thing I'm saying, that the timing right now is not good because of the market is just overinflated. And they just dumped 1.9 trillion dollars into the market, I mean, not in the market, in the economy, but it's going to bleed into the market. And we're going to see that market be a little overvalued for a little while. And I think that we needed wait. That's just my opinion, and that's all I really have.
Okay, so this is an opportunity while we have the consultants available to ask any questions about pension obligation bonds from them, as well as concerns you have with staff. So Councilmember Vega.
Just to clarify, thank you so much for the presentation. Not sure if he can hear me. Can you hear me? Okay. I, I think this is a high-risk option. It looks to me like it's a variable interest rate, and I'm not sure if, if you mentioned if there was a cap on the interest rates, on the movement of it. It looks like it goes up and down. We're starting at the lower end. Yes, CalPERS has their 7% rate, and as long as they get 7% and above, we do okay with what we're doing. But if, if it's their below expectations, again, I'm asking double questions here, but is it a variable interest rate and is there a cap on, with the POBs?
Great question, Councilmember, and I think I heard all of that. There, the interest rate on the bond is fixed. So, you know, that's dependent on when you lock it in. So as I mentioned, some cities locked in at 4% over the last year, some at two and a half, some at three. It's all dependent on the market. That's fixed. Where you see the, the risk actually impact you is what might happen in the future. So the way to think about it is you can wipe out your, you could convert all of your 100 million dollar debt to 3.5% debt, clean slate. In the future, though, when CalPERS underperforms, or if there is a stock market crash and there's more UAL that gets added, that UAL that gets added might be higher having done the bond. So you may, you know, maybe you get a new UAL of, of 20 million having done the bond because you had more assets that took a loss versus maybe a $10 million UAL that would have got added on if you had not done the bond. So you just got hit with a $10 million differential. And it's, it's, it's a fairly complex analysis, but that is the, as CalPERS underperforms in the future and you have additional UAL, that eats into the savings that you created upfront. But the rate on the bond is fixed. It's really all about, and I think this goes to, I think that was Dean speaking earlier about the big risk is where returns will be in the future. And so I think Dean's concern is, is, is right on. We are at highs on the stock market. I think for those who issued prior to this fiscal year or mid-fiscal year, they are coming out very well because they timed it well on the asset side. But I think folks who are coming this summer or in the future need to take that into consideration. And I think that's why we talked earlier about stress testing, to really look at, you know, if there is another 08 recession or a 20% market drop, are you better or worse off having done the pension bond? And there's, there's break even analysis. I know, just sharing some recent analyses, it usually takes about a 20 to a 30% market crash to make you worse off having done the pension bond. So there is a point at which you would be worse off having done the pension bond if that, if that big downturn is big enough. And that's the, that's the risk that Dean alluded to, and it's probably something that's maybe a bigger concern when we're at a higher point in the equities market.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cordova.
So Dean, my questions are actually for you. I do understand the risk and I do understand the possible, I guess, savings. It, it would be a substantial savings. And I do get where, I guess, if CalPERS was to drop, I do get that, that, that's where the risk comes in for us. But historically, what has been the lowest that CalPERS has been?
To me, an example of what I'm seeing right now in the market is if you look at '07, to me, this, the market right now is, people are dumping money on the market left and right. You're seeing stocks that are selling, anything over 20 times earnings is an expensive stock. And you're seeing them on the average 30 to 40 times earning. You're seeing stocks like Amazon, 80 times earnings. You're seeing Tesla, 1,400 times earnings. To me, that's telling me the market's overpurchased. People have bought too much. And the thing that concerns me even more is they just passed 1.9 trillion dollars that they're going to push out into the economy. That's going to push that market up again. I mean, the timing, I mean, they, Mike talked about it, how we would be able to issue it the earliest in four to five months. That, to me, is going to be at the crazy peak. And I also think that what's going to happen at, at that time too, is, is there's going to be so much money in the market, eventually the feds are going to say, you know what? I'm starting to see inflation. And now it's even worse to do pension obligation bond because the interest rates will start creeping up. Really, we need to wait and see what the market's going to do and what's going to happen. Right now, it's crazy season, I think, in the market. And if you look at what happened in '07, I know, and it's not Mike's job to, to warn us about what, what's going to happen in the market. That's not his job. Just like Lehman Brothers, when they talked to stock, then it wasn't their job to tell them. And if they would have known the, the market was going to crash, and it crashed almost 40 some percent, if you take in the consideration, the, the missed earnings that they had, plus the correction in the market. And they had 152 million and it destroyed the city and put them in bankruptcy. That's something that you need to be cogs into as we walk into that. That's, this is, to me, is a replay of where '07 is. I don't know what the market's going to do. I think it's not going to crash. I think it's going to peak up and then it's going to slow down for a while. To me, I want to see what that peak does before we move on something like this because you're buying on leverage. And, and like Mike said, you're, you're taking a $97 million and you're buying it on credit, basically, and you're throwing the market. So when the market goes down, not only in trouble for the 206 million we, we have in the bank, you're in trouble for that 90 million you threw in with it. So that's, there's a lot of risk right there. And right now, the market is just a little concerning to me, what I'm seeing.
Okay, so I get that. I get that. But I'm not for the pension bonds and I'm not against it. I'm here today to learn. So what I want to know is historically, what has been the low point for CalPERS?
Well, it's, like Mike, he touched on what the average is. I mean, the average is, somewhere around 7%. That's where they kind of came up with that discount rate. So the chances of us, if it was the law of average and everything was imperfect and everything hit the averages.
Assuming, yes.
The pension obligation bond would be a good move.
Okay.
But it, it's a double-edged sword too. If, if the market, you don't want to buy in a valley either, because if you buy in a valley and then the market, you know, rallies, now you've got a, an overfunded pension obligation. You've got too much money in there and you can't take it out for anything. Pepper really tied our hands. We can't take it out unless it's for pensions. So really, you just got a bunch of money in the bank that you could have ran your city with, you know, the CalPERS would have adjusted our CalPERS contribution rates. So, you know, there's, there's different, you know, strategies. And like Mike said, this is a very complex bond. These bonds are very complex. You really got to do your homework.
Right. So understanding that, it could go either way, even with what you just said. We could be on the opposite end where we could be in a surplus if.
And my, my fear right now is we'll be buying on a peak. And if, if, if we're seeing 33% from a year ago and the average is seven, well, you know some negatives are coming. Even at 15 from July and, and, you know, really, what did the stimulus cause? To me, my, my guess is the stimulus has overstimulated the economy by 10 to 12%. And I think it's going to happen again.
I, I get that. And I agree that there's an inflation, it's in property values. I mean, I, I understand that completely. If I'm going to look at a concern though too, and I get the risk here, and that's a concern for me. So I definitely want to really have that as a main priority for myself when I'm thinking about, do I really want to vote for something like this?
And if you look, if you, to answer your question a little bit, I think of where you're going or you're asking, is if you go to the, the actuariales, there's a page in there that shows the interest rates. I put it up once before. And the CalPERS is equities. It's very volatile. You'll see it's like this. So it doesn't usually follow the average. You'll have a peak year, a down year, you know, and you want to buy somewhere in, in the middle. That's, that's hard to do. It's like, you know, if I could predict the market, I probably wouldn't be here. I'd be in the sailboat in the Bahamas, you know.
Right. And, and CalPERS is unpredictable. I get that. By doing the pension bonds, we are going to have a set rate. So that is a little bit more controllable as far as what we're going to be paying, but I get what the risk is. I fully understand that. I get that. My concern, if we didn't do pension bonds, and I flip it to the other side, is that we have a buy-down program, which we did last year, which is fine. We're in there. It's, it's, we're being responsible with it. But we don't have a method for covering if that hap, if that scenario happens with CalPERS anyway. So we're going to, most likely, the likelihood is very high, that we are going to accumulate another layer of unfunded liability, and we're not handling that on our own.
You're right. That's a gamble.
You know what I mean? So when I'm looking at both options, I just, I, I accept what you're saying and I do get it. And I love the fact that you're always the person that says, hey, 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 slow down. Let's not get too excited about any one thing. I love it. But at the same time, if I'm looking at these pension bonds and I'm looking at historically what CalPERS has done, you can't predict it. I get that. But you can kind of see where it's at. And if we, if we were to look at the pension bonds, if we would have done it maybe, you know, a few months ago, we would have probably gotten that lower, lower interest rate. Right now, we're going to be looking at a little bit higher than what other people bought into at the end of last year and beginning of this year. So the gap of, or the risk of liability was a lot, was a lot larger. Every month that we wait, and as our interest rates go up, the gap minimizes. We're there. But if we don't do this, which I'm not saying we should, it's all possibilities right now. It's just a discussion. I'm not saying I would vote on it. a discussion. I'm not saying I would vote on it. But if we don't, then we're looking at, on our side, handling business ourselves, we're not handling that second layer that is going to come no matter what. We're going to get another layer of unfunded liability, and we, as a city, are not prepared for it because we're not allocating any money for it. And we're not, we're barely able to put money into, through the, through the I-2020 into paying down the existing unfunded liability. So it's a concern for me if, if we do and if we don't.
I, I agree.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's something you guys sit back and analyze. And, and to me, something that's not NHA's job is to predict what the market's going to do. And also, not to say you should go ahead because you should be comfortable with this risk level. We need to have this discussion, and there is a lot of risk. And are we comfortable with having that much risk? Because we aren't a big, we don't have a lot of profit in our, and we don't have the big revenue streams coming from these forty million dollar houses around us. We're, we're, we're an average city, if not below average. And to make up ground for us, we've already seen what that felt like when we didn't have the I-2020, and we were trying to make up a ninety three million dollar debt. It was killing us. My prediction, as they ratcheted up CalPERS, is we were going to get rid of twenty six positions. So to me, to have I-2020 is a blessing.
I agree. The consultants are here to give us the information. I'm looking at you because you're the man. And, and at the same time, I know that you don't have that crystal ball. But I also want to know that if we don't do this option, then what are we going to do to mitigate it on our own end? And so I'll be looking at that as we get into the budget season and as discussions about this carry on, so.
And to me, I mean, I wouldn't mind doing a pension obligation bond, but it being ten years and pay it down. Because like I said, the long term debt doesn't belong on the general fund. It's, it's strangling the general fund.
Yeah.
But that's pretty aggressive. That takes away from, you know, we're behind on a lot of our infrastructure. We're behind on a lot of things that we need to make up ground, you know, like fire trucks and-
I agree.
-you know, police cars, and a lot of things that we need to, our fund balance, we're negative two hundred and some plus. You know, I said it will be positive two point five. That means we'd be positive two point three. We're supposed to be at ten million. So there, we do have a lot of stuff that, due to the, the process of all these budget cuts, is really, we're paying for right now.
Yeah. I, I thank you, Dean. I really do appreciate the way that you look at things. I do.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I, I wanted to just point out, you know, I do agree with Dean on, on almost everything. But one of the things I want to say is, just remember, this is just, this tonight is just informational. Exactly what Councilmember Cordova said, if we want to look at that and we want to stress test, that's what all these are, is what if the market does tank by thirty percent, forty percent? You know, what if it drops down to six thousand like in 2008? That's what that next step does, is it comes up and, and they're saying, you could have almost an infinite amount of stress tests. You can pick and choose all the different variables. So to not go forward after tonight seems to me to, like we're missing the boat because we could see that. We could, we could hit up on all, you know, what happens on this side? What if, what if we are in a position where they're getting much, much better returns, and we're going, great, now we have money in, in the purse and we can't use it? That's what this is really doing, is educating everybody and then saying, yeah, go on the next one, because the next step is not, we're not signing bonds, we're not issuing bonds. It's just looking at what's out there. I think one thing that wasn't mentioned is all those savings, those are on top of the twenty one million that we've all talked about. So there is a substantial amount of savings on top of the original fresh start that could help out in the long run. You know, I'll throw out mine, too. I got the thirty years of finance. So, you know, we have a little differences of opinion. I do agree, the market's pumped up a lot with four trillion, five trillion, whatever it is. But I think going through this, we can look at all the different options. It's going to be down the road. You're going to have some of this money coming into the market. It's going to show us. If it gets up to five percent, I go, eh, it's not, it's not worth it at this point. But right now, being so low, that mitigation factor of going from seven percent with a CalPERS return down to, let's say we get three percent, that's a large variance there that we'd have to really drop down. And then that piece below that, you're not, you know, in Stockton, which I disagree with Dean, it wasn't, in my view, wasn't what caused them to go bankrupt. They had a lot of debt. But they were, they sold for six, five and a half, six percent. So they had a small variance to hit before they lost it. Now you're going seven percent, all the way down to possibly three percent. So you have a much longer road to go before you really hit the bottom and you go, oh, now we're, now we're not doing well. So I really think going forward, we need to just go the next step and say, okay, let's stress test it, and let's look at everything and see how it works out. It's not, at that time, it still doesn't, we're not signing any documents. We're just looking at what this will cause.
And also to add to him, Stockton had some other problems. They were really dependent on RDA. And when that got pulled out from underneath them, it was kind of like the wham bam, and then they were over. But I, I agree with him in one, one sense. It's not, I, I don't think it's a no. Just right now, the market is just not poised for it. And it is something that we need to bring back and educate ourselves. It is a very valuable tool to save a lot of money. And, but you got to be careful because there's a lot of risk.
Councilmember Ball.
I have a couple of thoughts. First of all, I'm just so excited to, to be here to learn about really complicated numbers. So I think that if, if I put it this way, is tonight, we don't have to vote on something, we don't have to make a decision on whether we want this or not. But we do have the option of going through a pressure test and a stress test. If we want to refinance our house, we want to know every single option. We want to know every, every method that we might go about to make the best decision. Sometimes that decision would be, let's just not refinance. So to me, if we have the option to learn more over the next couple of months, and put our city through a lot of scenarios, to me, knowledge is power, and that could be very valuable to us. And to Mrs. Cordova's point, is through that process, even if we decide not to do pension obligation bonds, I would submit that we might learn quite a bit that can educate us on how we need to step up and start funding our, you know, some of those things that we have not yet put in place, those unfunded things that are in our future. So for me, that, that, that excites me to at least spend the time to learn what our options are. I think that's really important.
Any more questions, either for the consultants or staff, before we open to public comment? Councilmember Cordova.
Another question. If we were to look at this, what, based on the city's credit rating, what percentage do we think that we could possibly fall into?
I'm going to-
Do we have an idea?
I will throw that to Mike or Craig. But I know right now, if you, if you put us up against Huntington Beach, Chula Vista, Orange, and the others, they are in a better position. But as Mike was saying earlier, one, we do have, I measure I-2020. We do have a cannabis, you know, influx. We have some different things that can help out. But the, one of the big ones is we do need, whether we do this or not, as Mike said, we have to put some kind of a policy in there from, from a pension type of perspective. They'll look at that, as long as we also make sure we follow those types of policies. We can't just put it in there and then not follow it. We have to make sure that we're adhering to that. But that'll be a big one. But Mike, what would you, if we were to do it today, we could wave that, the magic wand, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, great question. I don't believe the city has a general fund rating right now. So, I mean, our assumption is that it's, it's likely in the A category. I think there's definitely some work likely to be done to, to strengthen that, or, or even be there, just based on where you're at on reserve levels, being under some of those targets, perhaps. On the, you know, a big score is management and policies in place. So pension funding policies, I think that would be core to obtaining some of the rates we talked about. I think it was slide fifteen in the book. You'll notice most of the entities that have gone to market are in the double A category, although there have been some in the single A. So, you know, the rates that we put in the book are about seventy five to eighty basis points higher than the Huntington Beach from today, because that is such a strong credit. So, you know, the, the high threes is probably something that could be feasible, assuming that the city was able to obtain that, that A category rating.
Would, and any kind of insurance buy down, would that help us at all? Did you hear that one?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear that question.
Oh, you know, and sometimes if you go ahead and purchase the insurance, that'll help us with the rating. Do you think that would help us at all on that part?
I'm, I'm sorry. I missed the beginning of that. Did you get that, Craig?
Yeah, I think Jim's talking to credit enhancement and insurance policy rap.
Correct.
So insurance, sorry, sorry, Jim. Insurance is not, so there have been a few insured issues. Assured guarantee, insured four cities that have a dedicated property tax override that secure the pension bonds. We've seen the other bond insurer, Build America, just come in and insure the three most recent deals, Chula Vista, Orange, and Huntington Beach. That's the first time they have insured an unsecured POB. That's for very select credits in the high double A category. So I would think that unless you were to go with a lease revenue bond structure and put up collateral, such as a, a building, City Hall, a bond insurance would not be feasible for this transaction.
Okay. So as we go through the exercise, if it goes past tonight, I think it's very important for us to consider our current credit rating and what we would need to be to even get to that point where we have that desirable interest rate, or what, by not having that desirable interest rate, or that desirable credit rating, to get that desirable interest rate, what are the steps that we'd have to put in place, and, and what are the risks involved with that? What I also want to veer away from is that we continue to refer to, you know, we can always fall back to continue to fund this unfunded liability or pay down this unfunded liability with the I-2020 and, and the cannabis and all this stuff. Because at the end of the day, if all we're working towards is just paying down CalPERS and all this unfunded liability, I'm not seeing where the residents of this community, and yes, this is responsible because this is a debt we can't get away from. So it's important for the community to understand that. But I'm never seeing, then, when we are going to actually start funding things that are touchy feely for our residents. Where is the, you know, improvement to our parks, and the improvement to our quality of life, and the improvement to our infrastructure, our buildings, our police department, our fire station? That's never going to happen because we keep saying, well, we'll just use this money, again, to fund this, or to, to pay down this unfunded liability. And that makes me nervous.
Well, that's one of the reasons why I want to point out, twenty percent of the I-2020 in eighteen and the next year is towards the reset, and a lot more. It's almost twenty five percent of our whole budget goes to the debt.
Right. So that's already been done. But if this fails as a backup, if we, if, if we get that risk factor that comes in, and we say, well, to, to mitigate that risk factor, we're going to now use more I-2020, or we're going to use more of what's coming into the general fund that could be used for our, you know-
To answer your question, when are we going to see the, you know, the, the touchy feely, the things that, that are tangible things that our, our citizens are going to see?
Yeah.
We've been collecting this tax all year long. And of course, we were at a deficit when we closed last year. So we really won't see all that money and, and be able to recognize or touch it or distribute it or have it at our fingertips, if you will, until June thirtieth of this year. So that's when we'll start to see, reap the benefits.
Yeah.
That's one of the reasons why I, I, I said, buy four police cars, buy a fire truck, in anticipation of that money, because I know those are things that people are going to get hurt. We just got to get them fixed, you know? So those touchy feely things, you'll start seeing them. But you won't see them until we actually finish this year, and we actually recognize that that money has been collected and we have it available.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. And I appreciate that, the fact that you guys don't always agree, because that tells me that you guys are both looking at things from different perspectives, which I think is great. So I do appreciate that.
I still love him. Yeah, we're still, we're still friends.
Councilmember Vega, and then Councilmember Ball.
Dean, one question here, okay? We keep talking about the revenues from I-2020. Is it not true that it does expire that revenue stream in-
Yes.
-thirteen, fourteen years, okay, where that won't be there?
Yeah, it sunsets in fourteen and a quarter years from, from today.
And the impact of that is what?
Well, to me, my, my recommendation is if we're going to do any kind of debt restructuring, is we try and keep that in our minds, what happens-
Within our I-2020 revenue stream, yes.
What, what happens if the citizens say, no, you should have paid this already. You said you were-
Gotcha.
Whatever. They may, they may see, may see the benefit and say, continue. But we got to be cognizant of the fact that it does sunset.
I got you. And that, that's versus our current structure, which was structured under that timeframe. Also, to make sure that we had that revenue stream for the fourteen years, basically, on our UAL payment schedule that we have now.
Yeah. It's just something we need to be cognizant of when we do our analysis, you know, keep that in our, our back pocket.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ball.
Now, I just want to say that, that the elephant in the room is the word risk, this whole thing. Everything that we're going to talk about or decide is going to be risky. I just, again, just want to submit that if we don't figure out how to tangibly affect the quality of life for our citizens in the next ten or fifteen years, that's a risk that we won't overcome either. We will be forever under the reputation of an underachieving city. So I'm not saying this is our, our best option or our worst option, but it is something worth discovering so that we can at least know that we might have a tool that could help when it comes to quality of life issues.
Councilmember Cordova.
And I'll just add to, to the discussion that I hope that we don't go into this budget season, or even in this discussion, that we're not looking at it fifteen years from now and still thinking that Lompoc is going to be in this same negative situation. Because if that's how we're going to view it, then those are the poor decisions that we're going to make today. And our job really today is to be thinking about, how do we make fixes today that can hopefully secure the positive so that fourteen years from now, fifteen years from now, Lompoc is not sitting in the same place? So if we're already thinking fifteen years from now, we're going to be in the same place, and we're still going to be cutting, there ain't going to be nothing left to Lompoc.
Any more questions for our consultants or staff? Seeing none. The consultants are welcome to hang on through our public comment in case we have any questions after we hear from the public and finish our discussion. But we will go ahead and open the floor for public comment on this item. You may call in at eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one, eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one. Remember to mute your television, PC, or radio to reduce the feedback that comes through. And you will have three minutes to speak on the pension obligation bond option. While we wait to see if anyone calls, were there any written communications on this item, Madam Clerk?
Nothing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Given the time delay that occurs, I will try not to close public comment until there has been enough time for anyone watching or listening to hear the number and give them a chance to call in. And the only reason I keep talking is our recording system will stop if I stop talking, or there is no commentary going on. So I will call the ball and say one more time that the number to call for public comment is eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one, eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one. And remember to mute your television, radio, or PC. And I realize many of you are out there celebrating St. Patrick's Day and the fact that we're in the red tier, and I can't blame you. And this, hopefully, will be an ongoing discussion, so you get another lovely opportunity to engage and participate if you miss out on this evening. And I'm going to say, this has been almost a minute, and we're going to close public comment and bring it back to council for any additional questions, concerns, conversation, or motion. Councilmember Vega.
I really appreciate all the information, and I appreciate some of the people who weren't part of our previous conversations. This is our, about our third time going through this bond issue. This is our, about our third time going through this bond issue. It was never projected as one of the primary choices. One of the reasons that CalPERS was locked in in the beginning or by the previous council was to get this debt over with and paid off with principal. Lompoc needs to be fiscally responsible and not just continuing staying in debt. Yes, we need a lot of things, but it's really nice to be fiscally responsible and have a balanced budget so that we won't have to have budget cuts and have openings in, in our job market. I see what the reasoning here behind it because it looks like your monthlies go down, but you're extending your amortization schedule to a longer, to a longer timeframe. So it frees up some money on a monthly, but in the end, you're going to end up being, you're paying plus the risk in this inflationary time. Inflation is going to hit, as Dean noted. They runs in 10-year cycles and right now, we are at, we're hitting the top. There's a lot of free money up there without any backing up there and it's going to come back and backfire on us. We just need to be prepared. I think the two differences are if whether you go with the pension bond or you stay with the current structure is that we do need to have a reserve policy that addresses any deficits or any losses that CalPERS might shore up. And I think the consultant mentioned that in any one of our structures, we need to have some sort of uncertainty fund, funding so that we can streamline and flatten out the curve in case CalPERS either does or doesn't perform or underperforms. I think that's the key, key point that I'm getting out of here. So I wanted to make that point just so that everybody knows that we've gone through this a few times and it was never a, a number one choice, a pension bond.
I, I think the only point I would differentiate is we've actually never had an in-depth discussion of pension obligation bonds. It was brought up in the 17, 19 budget cycle, but highly not recommended because of the two cities that had taken it out and gone into bankruptcy and that they weren't being issued at the time. So I think this is very different in that this is the first time we've actually had a, a full discussion on what it is to have a pension obligation bond, what the current status of that market is and what options we have potentially to examine what that tool might look like. Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, I was just, and maybe I'm reading this wrong, but at this point, we're, we're still in the learning phase and learning about the options of pension obligation bonds. And while I, I understand where Mr. Cordova, I mean, I apologize, Mr. Vega is coming from on lengthening or amortizing way into the distant future, there are options. It seems to me that there could be a 14-year option, POB. There could be a 20-year, there could be a 30-year. So again, we're not even debating or arguing at that point, or this, at this point. But I, it does make me curious. There are options, there are different ways, and we have not had this in-depth conversation yet. And we're not obligated at the end of tonight, we're not obligated in a month from now. This is just the opportunity to learn more and see if this is a viable option. And again, it may not.
Councilmember Cordova.
So anyone that knows me knows that I like to go through the exercise. And in order for me to make the right, what I feel is the best decision, I want to know all the information and I want to go through the exercise and I want to be able to expose all the reasons why it's, there's a plus and all the minuses that could be attached to it. And I want to listen more from Dean as to why he thinks that this is a bad idea potentially or it's unpredictable. But I also want to go through the exercise. I specifically recall prior council withholding for years the right for voters to choose in a tax measure because they felt that that was the right thing on behalf of those voters. And when they finally caved and gave the people of this city the right to do it, the people voted in, they wanted to do it for their city because they were tired of seeing cuts, cuts, cuts that were impacting their quality of life. So I feel that we have a fiduciary duty, an obligation to go through the exercise. I'm not saying how I feel about it yet because I don't even know how I feel about it. I just want the information. So I would like to propose that we move on to the next phase and continue to get the information. But what I want to know also is, I know that the report, the staff report says there's no fiscal impact as of right now. Is there a fiscal impact by moving forward into the second educational phase of going through the research and going through?
Yes, there would be some cost involved. Mike, do you remember what that would be for the actuaries or the other consultant we might need? To do the, to look at, instead of doing the whole validation process, to look pretty much just at the stress testing piece at this point.
Yeah, I think Jim, it really depends and we could talk, I think, after this about what that stress testing looks like because there's a lot that NHA can do. We are not actuaries though, so depending on how in-depth you'd like to go with the amount of options, the amount of nuances in those stress tests, you may be bringing on an actuary. And we could talk about those costs of those reports typically, you know, 10 to 15,000 for a lot of that stress testing analysis by the actuaries. I think the, I want to make clear that the validation process is a separate legal process that costs about 20,000. So that could be, you know, initiated at any point in time, but that does take four or five months before the city, you know, that validation period would have to end unchallenged before the city would even have the opportunity to, to do a POB. So a lot of agencies will kind of dual-track the education. Others will do the education and stress testing upfront and then move to a validation process.
So about Mike saying close to 15 if we have to bring in the actuaries?
Okay, so having said that, I think likewise, there is a fiduciary responsibility for us to look at what the cost would be to move on to the second phase. And without having that actual cost, I think it's unfair to ask this council to move on to the second phase.
I think what he's saying though is it's going to, how deep does the council want to go? Do we want to do 10 stress? Do we want to do 110 stress? You know, each one gets a little more intricate the farther you have 20 different what-if statements in one analysis.
Right, so the determination of that, I think, would have to, I guess, be discussed tonight if we wanted to go on even to the second phase. But here's the thing, is, is that in the next four or five months, the whole world could change again and interest rates could completely change. And then we're no, we would have spent 15, $20,000 on an exercise that now really doesn't make sense and now we've spent that money. So we really should have come to the table having already done that part of the homework so that the council could then really look at this and say, okay, today, right now, it's going to cost us X amount of dollars and this is what staff recommends would be in phase two. I don't know, that changes my, that changes my opinion about whether we can move forward or not.
So my question is, if we moved forward on a first phase of what seems to be, a path some take is to do two of the things parallel, the stress tests and the validation. If we move forward just on stress testing and examining what the options were, does that provide us the kind of feedback we need to better understand what is wrong with where we are and why we wouldn't get some of the better rates and what we might need to do to set us up to get those better rates if the economy doesn't have some massive change to it during all this timeframe and things return to something that this becomes a viable option? I mean, does that, doing that stress test portion, I think, to me, sounds like it might be some of that feedback we need no matter what about our community and where we're at financially and what's available to us and where we are with our credit rating and what we're going to qualify for, whether we're POB or not.
So we can, we can look, you know, working with NHA, we can look at the different levels that we are. So anytime you sell a bond, that day you do it is the day that's what you know you're going to get. So that's why there's always this, well, it's going to be between this range and this range because it's just like the stock market, it's up and down every day. So we can work that out as Mike or Craig was saying, you know, we can try to go back and verify that we're in A. Some of that though would have to go through as we do a whole rating analysis. That's, you know, I'm going to ask Mike, this isn't, this is just stress testing. Do you think we could go through and do at least a, I'll call it a high-level rating analysis?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, the stress testing could be, the scope could be whatever you want, but I think in terms of maybe getting comfortable with perhaps taking that next steps or not taking next steps to really maybe address Dean's big concerns about looking at some simple high-level, you know, what happens if the market crashes 20%? What if we have another 08 recession? That's stuff that we can help with. I think as, if you were to get deeper into this and wanted to see, you know, make assumptions for every year going out, 30 years, typically we bring an actuary on board, but that doesn't need to happen. It's, it sounds like perhaps there's a middle ground where it's some simple high-level stress testing to really quantify some of these what-ifs under a pretty dire situation and see if from there, you know, you want to move to a phase where, you know, there's a validation initiated. So I think we could assist with that before bringing on any sort of actuary to do a deeper analysis.
And then, you know, from a, a rating perspective, typically when you're going out to do a bond issue of, not, not say POBs, but a GO bond, general obligation bond or something, we can make a hypothesis and say, we're an A-rated, we're double A-rated. Usually you're looking at what you might have done in the past if we already have a rating from another. It could be water sewer, but they're going to look at what is it water sewer, general fund? Because we don't really have that at the moment, I don't believe, in any general fund bonds out there, do we Dean? Yeah, so, so this would be looking at NHA, they've done so many different bond issues. That's why I use them on a, you know, what do you think? And if Mike or Craig's saying, well, you're probably looking at an A, which isn't a triple B, that'd be really bad, but an A is not fantastic. But given our current financial situation, I think an A is probably a good starting point to say. But to get the actual number, you have to go through the whole process and that is time-consuming and can get expensive.
Councilmember Vega.
I just want to bring up here that this is all good and great information and I appreciate your comments here. Every time we do a test or we ask for information and we spend money, we are actually obligating ourselves, spending money and, and we're spending money on something where we have two recommendations here. We have the city manager who's pushing hard so that we can move forward and we have our city finance officer, which I have a lot of faith in him, just being forthright without having a crystal ball. And I think that we should listen to a point that where if it's going to cost us money, let them come back with something that's going to be less expensive or at least we have the full cost analysis before we vote on something because it didn't have anything in the staff report about any financial impact. I think that would be more important to me, just so we can move forward. It has nothing to do with the information, it has nothing to do with the bond. It's about when we move forward and we spend money and we're completely ignoring our finance manager's recommendation. And I don't know why we're doing that.
Ball.
Yeah, I think at this stage, again, this is, we're not voting on accepting it or not. We're trying to learn something here. And I think, again, sometimes you have to spend money to learn something. And I think that it would do the city a world of good to run itself through some stress tests so that we understand several scenarios. It'll, it'll educate us on a lot of things outside of just pension obligation bonds. I guess at this point, I'd be curious and I'd ask this question to both the city manager and to, and to Dean. At this point, again, I'm not asking for your opinion on whether we should or shouldn't do pension obligation bonds, but do you think it's a worthwhile exercise to go through and evaluate it for better or for worse to learn something? Is that a worthwhile process for this council?
Yeah, I think there's, there's a potential here, but I'd want to see a change in the market. I mean, to me, let's put this to home. You said something about, you know, doing a mortgage or not doing a mortgage. I want you personally, since you guys are the ones that are going to make this decision, I want you to take it personal. This is your money. You have $100,000 in equity in your house. Would you put it in the market right now? If your rate, if it's going to cost you, ignore what CalPERS numbers is. If it's going to cost you 4% and the market on average is doing 7%, the S&amp;P is a really good one to look at because that's very reflective of what the CalPERS portfolio is. Would you take $100,000 out of your house and put it in the market to try and beat that 4%?
Are you asking me?
I'm, I'm asking you, when you think of this, think of it as if it's your money. And think of it, that's the equation that's on the table.
Sure.
They're saying they can give us a rate at 4%.
Sure.
And on the average, the CalPERS is 7%, they're charging us for that money. Can we beat that? Can we beat that by putting it and giving it to CalPERS and put it in their portfolio? Are they going to beat that 4%? Right now, like I said, the S&amp;P is very reflective of what CalPERS is. They have a little bit of different things. I've looked over their portfolio. They have a little bit more fixed income, they have, they have a lot of them, they don't, they omit and don't think they're right for them to invest. But they're, you watch them go up and down, they're almost identical to the S&amp;P 500. The Dow has a little bit more tech. I don't want to get into all the different indexes, but you know, let that be what you're doing with the citizens' money. If you feel comfortable, then yeah, let's look at it and see what the market's doing and see if we all feel comfortable, then let's move forward. If we don't, then it's, there's no skin. Let's just say, let's wait.
So at this point, because we're not voting on accepting or instituting a pension obligation bond, we're actually talking about the nuances of what we could or couldn't do. Is it a worthwhile exercise for us as a council to learn that this might not be a great idea?
Oh, yeah, I think so. Right now, I'd say put it on hold though. I mean, that's just my opinion. I, I know, I, I really looked up to Jim and I know we have a difference of opinion here and that's good. That's for us, that's good for us to have a difference of opinion because we're both saying, well, what about this? What about that? And I feel better that, you know, I got a little bit more education from Mike and Craig here, from NHA. And I would have a different approach on different things, knowing what I know. But right now, I still have that feeling that this is the wrong time to be doing it and I'm sorry, but you know, that's, but I want you to think of it if it's your money. Because this is the citizens' money, $93 million, $97 million, depending which actuary you're going by, that's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money and those same citizens are very interested in us making critical decisions today, tomorrow, this year, next year, for the next five, 10 years. So I, I hear every single thing that you're saying. Again, at this point, we're not voting to say, let's do it. We're voting to learn.
And the learning process may also tell us, you know, that we don't feel comfortable putting all 93 million into the market and maybe want something lower. Maybe we just look at public safety, maybe figure out an internal funding and see how we are financially with our own financials. These are all different scenarios that we can work on and come back with. I think it's good to talk about this because, you know, this is my playground. I love this kind of stuff, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Only other quick thing I wanted to, please.
Oh, I was going to say, no, I, I agree with Dean. I think tonight would be a great time to start moving forward. We have this opportunity not to go out and sell anything, not selling a pension bond, we're not committing to it. It's strictly saying, let's go look at this. What does it mean, as Dean said? What, what would it happen if it's a horrible market? What if it's the best market? What if all these different things coincid all at the same time? That's what this process will do. Then it allows us to discuss it again, because again, we're going to have more educational updates and returns on what did the analysis show? And to me, there's not a drawback to it because other than, you know, there's, there is a cost, but it's relative to the total city. It's not a large cost, especially with the information that we'll be getting out of it. Could be extremely helpful to us to decide, go left, go right, stay the course as it is. It's, I think it's very, very beneficial to us.
I just had one more quick comment. I, I do want to agree on the importance with Mrs. Cordova about keeping, you know, at this point, we don't have the financial cost for the second phase of this, but keeping our costs down, whatever that means. I think it's very possible for us to avoid having to go through 105 stress tests. There's not 105 worst-case scenarios. There's three to five that I think this council could probably come up with. And there's a lot of other variables that we don't have to go through every single scenario. So to me, it's, I'd be curious to know where do we, the term bringing in an actuary, where do we cross over into needing that? And is there, in terms of keeping costs down, can I understand that a little bit better?
Yeah, so, so one of the things, I, you know, as we get closer to the end of the year, I'm going to look at Dean, but I think I still have some capacity in my budget. So it's not coming out of reserves or anything. It would already be a budgeted expense in the sense of, I just wouldn't purchase something else. I would go this, the other direction. But Mike, do you know, at what level is it, we go through three or five tests? We go through 10 to 20 tests? Where, where do you say, oh, we need to really bring an actuarial?
You know, I mean, that's really up to the city. I agree that it's not going to be 100 stress tests. Even when we've worked with actuaries, it's maybe three to four at most on the what-if stress test. most on the what if stress test. And I think I mentioned earlier, I think there's, we can do a few of those high level ones if it's a helpful, I think, baby step to to show what the what the impact of the city would be if there's a downturn. It starts getting a little more complicated if you want to say, here's 30 different variables for every year. That's when an actuary is helpful. But if it's just, hey, what if we have another recession? What if the stock market tanks 30%? Those are things we can do. And I think, you know, we didn't want to get too deep into the options earlier, but I think Dean mentioned that the other side of things is really the sizing and whether, you know, you're looking at just a public safety pension bond or miscellaneous or doing a very small fraction. And so those are part of, I think, the options analysis that would help show, I think, a bigger spectrum of options than what we showed tonight. We didn't want to overwhelm council with 30 options. But there are lots of things besides a 100 million pension bond in terms of sizes and different plans to focus on to achieve certain objectives, if you have those.
And this is Craig. I'd like to add to this conversation that I think we'd be remiss if we weren't having the council think about this. Really, somebody mentioned early on, a holistic approach. This, you know, we look at your pension liability and the and the potential options to restructure it, right? I want the thought to be different than refinancing your home mortgage for a lower interest rate. Sure, there's economics there. There's risks there, as we've just spent half an hour talking about, depending on what what the market does. And we can certainly run some of those what if scenarios. But we really want to encourage you to think about the restructuring concept as a tool to solving some of your other needs. There was conversation earlier from the council members about, you know, some of the the underfunded services needs, whether it's parks and or, you know, getting the financial health of the city with its reserve funds and getting back to kind of some of the policies that historically have been in place for the city. We want to look at this tool to solve those problems while at the same time to mitigate some of the risks, you know, the reinvestment risks and everything we're talking about. So, you know, I would like to suggest that you think about this in a much broader context, because if we're just simply trying to decide, do we do a pension obligation or do we not? That's not really the right question to be asking, because you're you really only want to do this if it's going to solve for another problem. And if that other problem is, hey, you know, between Dean and Jim, they're bringing you a budget that says, we really need to carve out $5 million a year for these particular services or these particular capital needs, then you think about this tool as a way to generate or, you know, carve out that $5 million number as an example. If you don't know what you're you would do with the savings, we as a firm, as an advisory firm, would have a really tough time continuing this conversation because we don't want you just to, you know, do a transaction like this without really having it solve other problems. So, you know, I'll leave it at that, that we, you know, we'd really like you all to go home tonight thinking about this as a, you know, we have a tool here. I'm not going to call it an opportunity, but we have a tool that we can use to solve some of our other problems. And if those aren't problems, then, you know, yeah, certainly don't take the risk and don't look at, you know, something like a pension obligation bond.
Councilmember Cordova.
I just want to say that, you know, in response to a comment that was made earlier by Councilmember Vega about, you know, us not adhering to the advice of 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 our Director of Finance. But here's the thing, I can recall plenty of scenarios where experts, staff, and even the city attorney has advised this council and the majority of this council opted not to listen to those experts and those and that advice and willfully did what they wanted. So I don't want to be labeled with that guilt trip because I don't think that that's what's going to resolve Lompoc's issues. I do also think that staff should have came prepared to to provide this council with the cost for the next step. The recommendation asks that we move into the next step, four to six month analysis. And and yet the fiscal impact says there's no fiscal impact right now, but did not disclose what that fiscal impact was going to be in order for us to move to that four to six month phase. And so that's the information that this council would have needed to make a decision today, or at least for me to feel comfortable to make the decision. I 100% agree with the advisors that the exercise at some point in time should be done because COVID changed a lot of things. It changed everything, how the world operates, how corporate America operates, as well as maybe potentially how government should operate. So I do think that there is a level of restructuring that needs to happen, not just because of COVID, but because we've done things for the same exact way for the past, I don't know how many years, and it's not working in Lompoc anymore. The needs of this community has changed. Maybe the the number of residents hasn't changed, but the needs and the demands of this community has changed. So if we continue to rubber stamp the same way of doing business in this community, we are never going to give these people in this community a better quality of life. Is there a way that we can bring this back and and table it instead of making the decision tonight and table it and bring back the costs so that this council can make that decision to move into phase two?
Yes, I can. I can talk offline with both Mike and Craig and get a little firmer. I think it's still going to be not quite, you know, 100% what the number is because it depends where we go. Like now that we threw out, well, we could look at paying just the public safety versus this. So it adds a few more what if variable tests in there. So I can get with them and we can come back at another meeting and say, this would be our best estimate on what it would cost.
And hopefully that's quick and that's something that can just be, you know, now that we've had the presentation and we've gone through the exercise that can just be put into the next council meeting or whatever. I just would hate to make a decision today and say, yeah, we should go into phase two without knowing what that cost is because it is a cost. And right now, we just got told we're in a deficit still.
So I think that is exactly the council direction that we could give tonight. It wouldn't be tabling. What we would be doing is instead of saying, just blanket, move into the next phase, what we would provide is some feedback to Mr. Troop to go and negotiate with NHA what that next step would look back look like and bring it back to us. So it wouldn't be tabling it. It would be giving some parameters to go talk to NHA about in order to get a better contract proposal.
I agree. And and I think that Dean noted, pointed out, 100%, I understand where you're coming from. But I also would like to see then collaboration now as to if we were to go through phase two and into the scenario of phase two, what is in the best interest so that we could learn? Maybe this council doesn't vote in pension obligation bonds. And maybe we don't go in that direction because by the time the exercise is over, maybe the interest rates have gone up and it's not feasible anymore, you know? But still, I do think you can agree that there is a need to restructure the way we financially operate and the way we look at what the future of Lompoc should be. So simply saying no is not good enough for me. So I would like to, what Mayor said, is go go back and have that information brought back to council so that we don't have to say a yes or a no tonight, but we can vote on being, once we have all the information before council. And it doesn't have to be, like Councilmember Ball said, it doesn't have to be all the 100 scenarios. Let's get real. What are the real scenarios that we can that we know we would have to face?
The other way is to also potentially put a dollar limit on it as well, is that within a budget range?
I think the problem with trying to come back with certain ones, we might get into it and go, oh, that would be a good one to have and we don't know about it, hadn't thought about it. I think coming back with a dollar amount to say not to exceed or or something of that amount would be best.
And how many potential versions would include in that and what some of the additional things we would find out through that process for that dollar amount, I think would be helpful. Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, a couple of things. City rankings and city risk. Well, I'll tell you, Lompoc out of 450 cities that are evaluated, and there are several things that cities are evaluated on, fund reserves, pension funding, revenue trends, et cetera, et cetera. I'll just say that Lompoc is in the bottom 225%. And I won't go into specific numbers. Our risk overall, moderate. Means we're not great. We're not the worst, but we're we're far from being great. I was going to throw in something earlier. I just wanted to make a comment about the delay on a tax, the comment that was made. I just want you to look at the reserves now. And if the tax had been put in place, what shape we might have been in then. If we're going to finance a bond, we're going to wind up doing it with I 2020 money. I'm that's basically where the money is going to have to come from. This would be 14 year bond. So we're already pretty much hands on with what we if we were to go down the path of doing a pension bond, we know we're going to do a 14 or 15 year bond. It would be ridiculous to extend it out to 30, especially now. I'm going to side with Dean on the lower risk later. There's people flooding the market right now on pension bonds, government bonds, tax exempt, the whole market out there is pretty much in a scramble. And by the time we get on board, it's it's probably going to be a lot more difficult to get a rate that would work favorable for us. Our reset is basically a pretty small risk there. We're going to be able to make our payments unless huge pay raises, we grow staff, you know, obviously if PERS goes back and they have a big loss, you know, these are things that possibly can happen. But the risk with our reset is far less than what the risk would be with a pension bond that we're going to obviously going to have to obligate for a 15 year period. It seems like we're chasing a dollar on this thing right now. It's like we never have enough money. We don't. But we do have, what, 2.4 million on this one next year? We're going to know in June for sure. But we're we've brought what the citizens want. We have more police that we can hire. We're going to have more parks people. We're going to be able to buy vehicles. We can take care of some of our little debts that we have. The reporting on PERS is always in the arrears. I think it's two years, correct?
I missed that last part.
What PERS is doing now will reflect two years from now. We don't ever have current up to date.
Right, there's a lag, yes.
So just be aware that if they're getting 13 now, that will reflect two years from now on what our PERS and UAL is going to be.
It's it is a delay before the actuarials come out and the numbers come out. And but right now, I think they talked a little bit, it's a 20 year with a five year phase in. So they phased it in. So, yeah, it takes a while for the ripple effect of the cow, the market or the changes in the market actually hit our contribution rates.
And I think one of the other things that we didn't look at as a council here is when you look at how many people are on our PERS right now, I want you to think, what was there, 260 some people listed that we are obligated right now with, you know, into tier one? Remember how many of those are in the enterprise funds? The enterprise funds are fully funded. This is not going to be an issue for us. For us, the issue is the general fund. This is why we were went into the I 2020. We knew we had the money for the majority of our non safety people. I mean, we can go down and we can have meetings and do all this, but I really think that in a year or three would be a better time to take a look at it. I think we're just going to beat a drum and waste time.
So I appreciate that. But I think if we were in such good condition with the miscellaneous, why did we do a whole reset on all of it and lock out any flexibility? So having 2 million is great when our infrastructure needs and our equipment needs are so much higher than 2 million every budget cycle. It's very disconcerting. And I think it's really important that we examine all possibilities for the kinds of access we actually need because our citizens, yes, they voted for this. They wanted to see their parks improved. They wanted to see their streets improved. They wanted to see infrastructure improved. They did not vote this in in order to pay down the unfunded liability of the retirees that have already
Well, it was able to retain service. That was the main thing. We didn't have to lay off any more firemen, police, parks, people. It's the whole thing, you know, it's it was done. It was done right. And we're seeing what this year roughly is going to be about a million and a half, the savings, 21 over the 15 year period.
And I understand your justification. You justified doing the full reset on that basis. And I respected that despite disagreeing with it. And I think what we still have an obligation to our community is to examine and understand it all. And by not moving forward and understanding what the pension obligation bond market looks like, whether we enter into it or not, at least we have prepared for in two years, if it's the right time, because things have stabilized and the interest rates are and we're healthier and we can get a 2% rate and the markets change that, we're prepared at that point to start the validation process, which itself takes five, four to six months. But if we we don't examine it and we don't prepare either this current council or the next council to be able to make the next decision as quickly as possible, then we're we're not examining things in a fair way to our community, saying, you know, our responsibilities are much bigger than just retaining and providing services at the level they're at. That if we if that's all our goal is moving forward, then, you know, then the 2 million that we're lucky to see will mean it'll take 15 years for us to see any change in our community.
Well, there's other things we're not thinking. You know, you want to go out of the box on something, why don't you do a public service bond, something, you know, you can bond or use other things. We could use this as collateral if you wanted to build a fire station. You could do many things, but the obligation for the retirees is firm now. It's it's there. We're going to go and try and work everything that we want to do in capital improvement based upon the retired city workers. If you wanted to build a new library, do you want to do it on the back of the tier one retirees on a bond that we hope works for us? Or would you rather take out a collateral loan and bond a library building or some, you know, what I just think we're going down a path that isn't going to be too good for us later.
Councilmember Ball.
So if the path includes learning something, educating ourselves versus assuming we know, I think that's a new direction for this council. I really do. On top of that, I just have to take exception to a statement that was made that we're, you know, we're giving the people what they want. We're adding a firefighter, we're adding, we're refilling these things. Let's not forget history. This this council, four or five years ago, took it upon themselves to deny the public who begged and pleaded to vote on a sales tax in 2015, 2016. And they said, no. And our obligation then was like 68, 58 million dollars. And now it jumped up to 97. And here we are. And we're talking about measure I that just got passed March 3 of 2020, 12 days before the COVID shutdown. Thank God that happened. To me, in my estimation, that was four years too late. So again, instead of us patting ourselves on the back that we're adding back 1.75 people in parks or one firefighter here or three police officers, let's do our due diligence and look at history and look at the numbers where they were five and 10 or 15 years ago. We can't be excited that we're putting a couple things back when there is a ginormous hole that's been created, not just because of council decisions, but part of that played a role in these challenges that we have. So let's let's try to be clear about that and do our homework on history.
Councilmember Cordova.
I I have to agree that for us to tell the public that, you know, we've we've funded or we've re not refunded, but I guess funded, and that, you know, the police positions were put back and everything, that's misleading because we have a slew of positions that aren't filled. And until we start addressing the other issues that are related to the funding of positions in this community, which we all know, there's a there's a huge gap of salary or wage difference between what Lompoc pays and what other communities nearby pays, that's an issue. That's an issue I don't like, you know, but that's an issue. And that keeps us from filling those positions that we keep telling the public, they're there, they're there, they're funded. But we can't bring people to to actually step into these positions. So please stop telling the public that. I completely disagree with the fact that just our buy down alone was the best thing that we could have done and it was the least risk. Because, again, due to the fact that the inflation is currently here, we will see a change in the market. we will see a change in the market. That doesn't even need to be, you know, said that we, predicted. It's going to happen. And when that happens, CalPERS will drop and we will have another layer of liability that we are not prepared to handle. So do not say that just by taking the money and having boughten down that 15 years, that we did the most responsible thing and that we did the, the, the least risk. Not true. We didn't, we didn't guarantee that, that payment by instituting steps to ensure that when the second portion of it happens, because it will, in my opinion, it will, it's just my opinion, we're not prepared to handle that. And then, but I will say that I am turned on by the comments that Councilmember Starbuck said. Are there other options that we should be looking at? You know, if there's an option for, you know, collateralized loan that could potentially assist in the infrastructure, I don't know. That's something that I'm also open to. Again, I, if we had to vote on this right now to say yea or nay, do we move to Phase Two without having the proper information, it's hard to make that decision. I think that, as we stated, I would like to maybe see the information come back, some kind of a cost. I disagree with putting a price tag on it because now the council has had to put a price tag on it as opposed to figuring out what the cost would be to do the necessary research and then bringing that before the council. So now I feel like that locks in the council on making a decision that says, oh, we're comfortable with spending 20,000 or 25,000. That's not really fair because the report should have included to go into second phase and have these scenarios played out, this is what it's going to cost you, council.
So I do think that the staff report did say that if we moved into the validation period and some stress testing, it would be in a range of approximately $30,000. That, that is stated, it's not stated in the fiscal impact if we made a decision. It is in the paragraph before, before that. So there is information in there. This really is about, sorry, I'm about to cough and I'm trying not to do it into the microphone. This really is about us giving feedback to staff so they can go back and bring back that actual cost. So if you're unhappy with the idea of putting a dollar limit on it, let's provide some direct feedback so that that can come back to us and we can make that decision on, this is what we're getting and this is what the predicted price is. So do you want to see, let's say, 10 scenarios? Would you like to see just those stress tests? Was, is there any additional information you'd like to see? Do you want the city manager to brainstorm with Dean and the consultants? And have them come back with a proposal that says, this is the best place to start? This is where the entry level into having the next phase of this discussion? I mean, really, it's, it, what, what the staff report is asking for is if we want to move forward, where would you like to move forward so that they can bring it back to us and we can sign off on it? It, it doesn't require us to just say, move into Phase Two.
Yeah, I'd like to see the scenarios, obviously, for the stress test. Maybe, I don't know. We talked about, you know, potentially five. We talked about 10. I don't know how many scenarios. I don't think it needs to be 100. But maybe we say, you know, eight to 10 scenarios. And I know that that's going to be one cost. And then the second cost is the validation process of whether we as a city could even move forward based on our credit rating. And so what that cost would be. And then that way, just bring it together to the council so we know what that, that, that total cost would be on both exercises with that. Because even if you brought back just the scenario of the stress test, then the council has to figure out, well, do we even qualify? And is it worth our credit rating? Is it worth the interest rate that we would get?
Yeah, we, we can do that. I can meet with the, Dean, I can meet with the NHA advisors and come up with, what is, what are they? Because they've been doing this with a number of cities. What do they usually end up doing? Five, 10? What's the, the common average? And then we can talk again about the validation process and have the two different numbers for you.
So would you like to make that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And it's been seconded. Councilmember Vega.
I'd just like to make a point here. If we're going to spend money, also through experience here, we also need to ask where the money's coming from. We've had situations where, yes, we know we're spending money, but it's a good question to ask where the money's coming from, especially when it's been noted that we have deficit problems. We have enterprise, we have all kinds of ways of spending money. But it's nice to know, Jim, you know, where this money's going to come from to make sure there's not, it's money that's being taken from somewhere else, okay? Politics in general, politicians, they spend money, but they don't ask the questions of, where is the money? Do we really have the money? We've been given answers before previously, that we have money, generically.
It would actually come out of my, my particular division, department budget. I haven't done a lot of spending.
If that could be noted coming back, I think those are great questions, you know? Because as we have some new members here that we are spending the taxpayers' money and just to spend money is, is, is not right. Thank you.
So you're asking the motion to be amended that he identified the funding source for, okay. And I'm going to guess that Councilmember Cordova would accept that amendment?
Accepted.
And would Councilmember Ball second that?
I'll second it again.
All right. So you have some direction in the motion. It's been amended, it's been seconded. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes for one. Thank you to our consultants for the in-depth presentation. It was very helpful. Thank you to staff and to Dean for your insight and work on this as well. This is to support you, not to compete with you. So thank you for all of your insight and to our city manager for being willing to have the discrepancy of agreement in public. This is important dialogue for us as well as our community. And to the council, it's really important that we look at all options as we move forward. We're coming out of a pandemic and we're going to see a lot of other stressors hit our community. And we still need to do best by the community, especially given their support in us. So we will adjourn this meeting until the next regular Long Polk City Council meeting at 6:30 PM on April 6th, 2020. Happy St. Patty's Day.